We're good.
Perfect. All right, we're gonna go ahead and call this meeting to order. Welcome everyone to the April 7th, 2025 regular meeting of Lyman's Select Board. This meeting is a public proceeding and is being recorded. If everyone could join me to start out with the Pledge of Believers.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. And we will kick it off with item number one, which is the Historical Society. Tonight we have Evelyn Lord to present Lyman's historical sawmills.
Hi, I'm Evelyn Lord, 149 Chapel Shores Road in the Lyman Historical Society. I have my trustee assistant here because it's hard to hold things. I got into, I got very interested in sawmills because we live on Wadley Pond and somebody was asking us who built the dam, the current dam. We had no idea, so this one started doing research about the pond and then it kind of led us to all of this. And these are the 10, the 10 that we were able to find, right? The ones that we were, that still have some, some parts of them left. And what I'd like to, I'm gonna pull you over here for a second, thanks. This is the Gould Mill and this is the one, Dave, this is the one we took a picture of over on your land. And we, we can't, couldn't get a really great, great picture of the actual remnants, but it's located right on Island Way. So that's one of them. That was from 1870. And all of them are marked, that's one and one is here. Then two is the Shaker Mill. And even though the Shaker Mill is in Alfred, the land, the water rights were owned by people from Lyman. So they leased the water rights to the shakers and they milled it. They did the milling and they had the flowage rights. And then at some point with the shakers, they ended up, some of their mills burned and they rebuilt. It was also a grist mill. And then they leased the sawmill to Charles and George Smith and then to Jordan Lumber. So that's when the lumber companies started taking over in the 1800s. John Porter, excuse me, Palmer, John Porter was the original owner of the Palmer Mill. And there was a marriage between Joseph Palmer and Susan. And then it was changed to the Palmer Mill. And eventually it was sold to Hammond Lumber Company. Lots of little writing here, you'll see Hammond, 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 Hammond. But you'll also see the original owners, which I thought was kind of, kind of interesting that they did both. This is one of my favorites because it's so beautiful, the Lord Mill. It's probably the oldest building in Lyman standing. And it was originally was a path of a sawmill. I didn't know how this could be possible, but often proprietors would lease or sell half of a sawmill. So you could buy half of one and get the profits from that or you could do the whole one or you could buy land that the sawmill was on. And eventually they, again, it still stands, was a grist mill build downstream from the, from the original sawmill. And then it was sold to... It doesn't say where it was sold. Oh, it's still in the Lord family, okay. The Spang Mill, that's probably one of the last ones to operate in the area. Spang's Mill, Day's Mill and Lord's Mill. And earlier owners were Nathaniel and Murphy Low, the Murphy family. And they got the land from Nathaniel Littlefield and he was the last owner of this, of the mill. This is kind of interesting too. Priscilla Spang was deeded, she was deeded the property, which was kind of unusual for, for a woman to be deeded property. And she took it over and that's, that's why it carries her name with it. And this is the Wadley Pond Mill. This is what started me on everything. That was, it was land that was given to or deeded to John Benjamin Lunt of Rundle and he bought the mill privilege and he built this new dam in 1926. So Wadley Pond was very, very tiny. And then it grew once he built the dam and then he had a grist mill and a sawmill there on the property. And if you look at the math, we had a hard time, we were trying to figure out, they were spelled differently, Wadley, W-A-D-L-E-Y. And then it changed to what we have now for the spelling. So it was tricky, it had to be kind of a detective to figure it out. Here's Goodwin's Mills. We all know Goodwin's Mills. And in the back there, if you've ever, if you ever have a chance, check with the Advent Church. They'll let you walk in the back there and all the old mill works are there. It's a little tricky, you have to be kind of light on your feet. But I went back there and it's, it's kind of fascinating to see when it's all still there, the engineering that went into that. And we included it of course because it's so close to Lyman. And the Fire of 47, they were still operating when the Fire of 47 hit and they took care of a lot of the, the burnt trees, the lumber, the timber and took care of that. And then in 1949, they ended up selling it to, not selling it, sorry, deeding it to the Advent Christian Church. Thomas Clark, Clark's Mills. Lots and lots of owners has happened with a lot of these folks. And he had a shingle mill. I guess it wasn't too difficult to change a sawmill to a shingle mill. And they also often had, had grist mills attached to it. But I, this is one of the most interesting things. Eventually the Clark Lumber Company took it over and they deeded the property to Morrison Nancy St. Clair. Isn't that, yeah, and you can picture that right with their house right on the corner there. Okay. The Stevens Mill. The Stevens Mill started off with a very old timer, an early settler of Cox Hall. In 1771, he purchased 500 acres. A lot of these men were very wealthy. They just took over a lot of the land here and it wasn't settled. So they would just had kind of free rein. And his wife sold the Smith and Martin Sawmill to Eliab Stevens in 1798. Then it became the Stevens Mill. And Mr. Stevens lived to be a ripe old age of 91 and he's buried on that property, which often happened, people, you know, they got attached to their land and there, there they lay for eternity. And Day's Mills. I think this mill and this mill are the prettiest mills just because they're still there. It just kind of gives you that old sort of 17, 1800s feeling when you see all the, all the waterworks coming down. He owned the grist mill and the sawmill, excuse me. George H. J. owned the grist mill and the sawmill, a farm of 150 acres and a grain business. He graduated from farming to normal school, which I thought was just for education. Was that back then a teacher college? Yeah. And he married Lizzie Whitehouse. And I know there's a Whitehouse Road down in Dayton. And their children, had lots and lots of children. And they kept the, they kept the dam operating until, in the old fashioned way, until 1915, 16, when hydroelectric power took over. Yeah. And all of this is written down on the back. And that's gonna be in the hallway, so you can flip it around. And if anyone wants a copy of this, we can get one for you too. So you don't have to tear it off the back.
You have to tell them that they get to keep it.
Yeah, you get to keep it. That's right, that's the best part. No. Thank you. It was, it was fun, fun to do.
Such a labor of love.
It really was.
Take care.
Thank you very much.
Okay.
Love that.
So we will keep moving. Item number two is public input. Public in attendance will have up to five minutes to address the board. We ask that you please use the podium to address the board and please be respectful of others. So anyone for public input. Okay. For mail in our packet, we have the York County Sheriff report. So that's also in the packet online if anyone is interested. I always enjoy going through that one. I don't think, we'll go into item number three. I don't think there's any updates from franchise. Perfect. So item B, RFP for property assessment, equalization project.
Yeah, so you guys finished up your budgeting and that's why we paused on the word needed.
Okay. So that's just on hold then, at this point.
We just finished that though, didn't we?
Did we? Well, we put it... I'm asking the question, I didn't say we were, I don't know what we're doing with this.
You can award the bid and I think the way I do the RFPs is like everything is pending town appropriation anyways.
Okay.
You know, so you're not, you know, maybe award it pending town appropriation or something like that.
Okay.
Or, or you can enable it.
I mean, I want it on our radar if, let's see intent, right?
Yeah, so I think the way they set it up was we wanted them to start working in July.
Yep.
Right, July 1/25.
So the budget wasn't the target to have the most part done by the end of the calendar year plus the transition over to from Trio to Town Cloud?
That would be the goal, but I mean, they're just gonna have to work with whatever system they have.
Right, it sounded like we were gonna give them the option to use Trio. Like if you want to use Trio, you have to have it by this point or just know that it won't be Trio, right?
We have, so we had to put aside some money. So I mean, like if we wanted them to start a little sooner.
Right.
Perhaps, you know, we have some money and they'd be going and then obviously everything is always pending appropriations. Like everyone's got a non-inproportion clause, like the many contracts we do.
Okay. I'm open to thoughts or motions.
So if we approved it, would the start line, ah, start line, start time still be the July 1st? If we were using money that we already have, could we start earlier?
I'd have to ask them because I'd want to make sure that they're ready.
Because we put it out there for July 1st.
We put it out there for July 1st, but I mean, if they came back and said, well, we could start June, you know? I'd like to have them to see.
Yeah, just a thought.
Because the last meeting, we, you know, we decided which part we wanted them to do. And so I just thought that that's what we'd be doing today.
I'm good with that.
So a motion to award RCS, the contract for $115,000 with cost tables. And as the contract will read, pending town approval of funding.
Second that.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
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 Okay.
There it is.
It's down the road. Now, revaluations, a different deal altogether, a little more involved. Would be out of the ordinary when that comes up to send an RFP to firms that do that kind of work. As I noticed on the main Revenue Services website, they have a listing of about 18 enterprises statewide that at least they mentioned have that capability. So just a suggestion.
Yeah, and usually you go with more recent recommendations. I can mention that person, they already be aware.
Okay. All right, thanks.
Awesome, okay. Item C has the RFP for the Bunginut ramps. We had opened the bids on March 17th and we tabled that. Think about it. So.
Appears Sebago Dock has the right scope and winning price.
I am in agreement with you, Dave.
Was that a motion?
Then therefore that shall be the motion to award Sebago Dock and lift for the three ramps totaling $11,668.
We'll second that.
Any discussion?
So I don't need to fly any way in here, but take a look at the, the figures. It totals up to And then there's the $11,688 figure. And there's a difference of, you know, $567.10. And I'm sorry, can you figure out what are the differences?
I didn't figure that out the last time either.
Is it, is it tax? I don't see a tax number in there.
Yeah, so what he did was if you look at his estimate, for each ramp, the $3,833, he put a plus tax. So he added, I think, 5% to that. And then I think he took the 10% off the total of those three and then added the 750.
For delivery and installation.
To discount the price. It is a little weird. But I mean, I would go by the total amount and say, that's what we're gonna pay you in case you come back and says something different.
Would we not be able to get, use our tax exempt?
We can use, I have to, we do have a tax exempt, so I can ask them.
Yeah. I'm still okay with the 11,680, knowing that then if it's less, then it's a saving.
Same here.
It should be a savings before taxes are.
Yeah.
And I'm sorry if I missed it. Did the Sebago mention a beginning and end date in terms of the work?
They did not, not in their bid.
They put it in the RFP.
Contractor must provide a proposed timeline for when the work can commence.
And then we said in our thing, work must be, is to be completed by August 29th, 2025.
So that, the end date is specified there though.
In our.
So they're aware of it, okay.
So I think if I can just see confirmed.
All right.
Any other discussion on that? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
unanimous again.
So then we have just the tabled item about developing the onboarding process.
Yeah.
We were waiting until after budget, so.
I'd like to propose a workshop on it. That will come up, I'll make a timeline, kind of, what I have in mind. And then anybody else wants to do that too? I mean, it doesn't have to be all my ideas.
Yeah.
But I, I do feel like it's an important thing. I still feel like it's an important thing.
I would agree.
But I know you have a propensity for workshops and so I know.
I know you just want me to go all the way.
Since your term is coming to a close, I would just want to workshop you.
And you probably want it on a Friday or Saturday, right?
Of course. The earlier the better.
Let's look at calendars then here.
No, I didn't even fill this one out yet. Whoops.
Do I need Thursday, the 17th? Actually now I'm going.
Oh, I was like, that's exactly what I have up.
Yeah, I have an ECO May board meeting and I've missed like the last.
Oh, because of budget.
Maybe do you say the 24th?
I'm away that week on vacation, but I can watch.
Could we?
If I'm not driving.
Could we do next Monday, the 14th?
I mean, I won't be able to put notification out.
Good.
Can't do that though.
Just. Because Good Friday, can't do a Good Friday.
Good, proceed our next scheduled meeting.
Which is the 22nd, not the 21st, right?
No, the 21st would be.
Because it's a holiday though.
Interesting. Patriots' Day.
Oh, the 21st.
Yes.
But are you away that week?
I am, I'm away, I won't be around either, I'm not in town, yeah.
28?
28.
Is an extra, yeah.
Yeah, I can do the 28. For the first.
What time do you want to do this?
Normal time?
Six.
Six o'clock?
28.
All right.
Who we want to call that? Unboarded? Select Board stuff? Stuff to take care of?
Dave, does that work for you? Sorry.
Yep.
Okay. Okay, excellent.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, going on to item number four, we have Department and Committee reports. In the packet is the Fire Chief's All Hands Report, which we get each week. And then we have Parks and Rec, Colin's here, do you want to give us, share your updates?
All Water Ridge, Parks and Rec and the Bunginut Committee. You'll follow along with me in the packet of maps there. So Colin has aged out of the Eagle Scout program, so he is, or Boy Scouts, so he's done. He's officially done with his project. And so in the packet is just a status and then proposals going forward throughout the rest of the year. So, well, just as a reminder, it was, it was Colin. The Bunginut Committee had started researching the trails, the, the old trails out on the property. And sort of coincidentally, at the same time, Colin approached Parks and Rec and said, I'd like to do this for my Eagle Scout project. And I thought, perfect timing. So last, that map number one there is of, you know, you can see those are remnants of blue blazes that still existed after the last logging operation. So you can see where the trail existed in the past. And I think there were other, other trails used in there by the Boy Scouts, but these were the only, no, I'm sorry, not the only, but this is the majority of the remnants that we could find and it was a big blue loop, so. That was easy to identify or easier to identify last winter without the leaves on the trees. So that was done last February. Map number two was something that Colin and I put together so that he could present to show his status. So map number two shows what he was able to recut of that blue trail. That was about .66 miles. And then he cut that red, the red trail.
Fabulous.
.44 miles. And then you could see where, so he, he really struggled, I think, with the, it was a large scale, you know, like the scope of it. And so with the snow and everything, he, he ended up having to stop where that blue trail stops and he made a beeline right down to the water. And I think that was a remnants of an existing old trail too. So what we did, I had him, he blazed the red trail and he blazed the blue trail where it's showing blue and that's it. And then you can see where he placed his kiosk and his three benches. And then you can see the parking areas in there for reference. And so the, the dotted lines there are trails that are existing, mostly existing. And there's a couple in there that are proposed, a couple little connectors in there. Let's see. I think that's all for that one. So he has cut that and he's blazed that. Map number three is the remainder of the blue trail, which I would like to propose to continue cutting this, this spring and into the summer. That's about .4 miles, so that will, that will continue the whole loop. And I would like to propose to finish that under Parks and Rec. But I would like to be able to solicit a couple volunteers to be able to help kind of bang that out.
What kind of things are needed? Chainsaw skills or just loppers or how, how big is?
He has done, I would say that the, I would say the rest of it could be completed with a small electric chainsaw. I don't think that there's anything substantial that needs any high power stuff out there. It's just gonna, it's loppers, a small chainsaw and just a lot of brush clearing to the side, just drop and then drag. It's not, you know, that portion of the trail on the, I'll call it the backside, but that, that portion of the trail is, you're kind of like side hilling. And so it's not, you're not, you don't need to drag equipment in there and not bring a four wheelers in there or tractors or anything. So. Or equipment, I don't. Hand, small mantles.
Oh, that's good to know.
And I just wasn't sure how that works as far as soliciting volunteers to do that. Ideally, I would like to reach out to a handful of people and that, so that they're aware of the plan and then we plan days. You know, this, hey, next Saturday, we're all gonna meet out here at nine o'clock and see what we can do, nine to noon or something. Repeat with those same, same volunteers.
I was behind, I was in front of the boy and his mother. I can call him a man, I guess, he's never grown up. But, and I was talking to them and they, I knew they were familiar to me, but they were buying the materials for that.
Oh, they mentioned that, they sell you a lot on people.
And I, I enjoy talking to them.
Yeah. He, he, I can't say enough good things about him and his family. He worked really hard on that. He's, he's so responsible. He's a very sweet kid.
Refreshing.
And his family was a big help to him. He accrued 169 hours of volunteer work doing that. Boy Scouts, friends and family.
Wow, nice.
Really nice working with him and I, and, and I think, you know, and he's the kind of person I would like to solicit as a volunteer to help me. And I'm sure if I, he would be more than willing to help. So that's, that, that's the only section I'd like to propose at this time. There's a lot still to do over there. But I just thought, one, one small section at a time. And that would be great to finish it and complete the loop. So then moving on to map number four. This is a current state with notes. So includes existing trails at Sid Emery Demo to show the connection between the two trail systems. And Parks and Rec is already coordinating with York County Soil and Water to help improve portions of their trail and their kiosk and signage on the Sid Emery side. And so that will be done, that would, that would be done separately through York County Soil and Water to do the improvements on their side. And again, Parks and Rec would submit proposals to Select Board for review for other future state proposals that are shown on this map. But I love this map because I, I literally gave Kevin, you know, some hand drawn things or PowerPoint maps and he was able to turn it into something that looks like this, which is what I think that would look great in a kiosk in the future.
Well done.
Yeah. So this is like a, a future state, or I'm sorry, this is current state, right? Current state with notes. Yeah, so there's notes all throughout here. There's notes in here regarding the York County Soil Trail, like showing that the backside of that needs improvement. That's the SIDS loop. The yellow loop is the quarry loop. That's totally doable right now. Anybody can go walk that. It's just that signage needs improvement. And then on the Bunginut side, then, you know, you've got the blue loop, the little red offshoot. That sort of like green, I can't read it. Starting at his kiosk and going in, that's an existing, that's an existing trail that goes all the way from Brock Road through the property and back down to the water. And that just needs like some minor brushing. And some flagging, some blazing, which we would propose again in the future, one at a time. And then you can see down on the trail where there's, you've got these potential for these little fingers to shoot up and to get you on to the blue loop. So you've got the potential to park at the main beach, and you've got the potential to park at that little dirt lot next to the ball fields. So.
Cool. I'm in.
Yeah. The red trail and what's, what's existing of the blue trail, it just needs, I just need to walk through it after, while I had noted on here at the time I made this, we just review after the snow melt, just to assess what other low-lying things we missed need to be cut, and then address some, some wet spots too. I think that it's gonna be, when we were doing all this cutting, it was super dry. And so nothing was wet, but I guarantee you right now, a lot of it's under, and we might need to put in a couple boardwalks. Five and six, example of a finished, example of a finished future state map opposed to the kiosk. And then so, but any final, final drafts would be submitted for select board review. So this, there's two, number five and six, five is zoomed in, six is just zoomed out. I like number six because it just shows you general, like where you are in Lyman, you know what I mean, not overview. And that's something, that's, I think, a pretty good example of what would look great in that kiosk for a trail map. Continuing on, number seven, just pictures of his benches and his kiosk. There's no content in the kiosk right now.
I saw that the other day, it was nice.
Yeah. He's got one right by the kiosk, he's, he's got it chained up. I gotta get Lindsay the key, he's got, he chained it up, and he bought a lock, and he chained it to the kiosk. So I wouldn't walk away with that, so that, with that bench, and then the other two are placed out along the trail. He, he's willing to work with me this year to, to make the kiosk a little easier to get content in and out of, so that, to maybe put it on hinges so that you can lock it, just swing the doors open and change out the content as needed. Number eight is just super generic example of ideas that could be put into the kiosk. Tick ID, animal tracks, things like that from the main dot gov website. And then number nine is, again, that's an example that comes from the Massapeachoo Observatory Forest, the Charles E. Sweat Trail. That's kind of where I got the general map example, I mean, it's super simple map. Super simple map, and then just some bullet points, you know? Don't park in front of the gates, stuff like that. Don't pick plants, carry in, carry out. No fires, no camping, stuff like that. But anything finalized, we would submit for the kiosk content, but that's the general idea.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Matt, Chief?
Yes.
Holly, are you requesting permission to recut, reblaze the rest of the blue trail?
Yep, you bet, yeah.
So move.
Second that.
Discussion. I think the only thing I just want to make sure is if any volunteers just sign, like the town waiver, so if anyone gets cut with a chainsaw. Hopefully that does not happen.
I'm in, I'll burn my loppers.
Okay.
Maybe as well.
The boss on.
Yep, thank you.
Any other discussion?
All good.
Okay, all in favor?
Hi.
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 This is awesome, thank you. Jump into the next report, you have.
Would you mind joining me, Kevin?
Yeah.
I'm gonna have Kevin, if you don't mind. He talks a lot about the committee report, he's a better public speaker than I am, and he's the Swiss Army knife, because Kevin, yeah, does it all, of the Bunganat Committee. Yeah.
High praise right there, I like it.
Yeah.
This is a little final report we put together, since our committee is disbanding through all of it. Basically to present to a select board and town manager. I won't go through every line by line, but we took a look at our accomplishments for the last two years. And from there, moved on to a list of items that we have planned for improvements for this year. Starting with the ramps that hopefully will get installed. We discussed a few things on the sidewalk on Saturday. Getting the new main path from the parking lot down to the beach fixed up to eliminate the extremely dangerous stairs that are currently being used. I'm not safe whatsoever.
I noticed that most people evade them, and they walk around them when I was there last summer.
Hundred percent.
It is still dangerous with loose gravel and leaves and stuff. So that's the plan, is to make the new main path arc around, so it's easier for strollers, carts, and things like that as well. So that's one of the main improvements this year, as well as adding some handicap parking. Dave was gracious enough to get some donations of some gravel out there, and so we just need to get that installed down on the lower roadway. We met with Rebecca, the CEO, and went through all the improvements to make sure there's no issues with the shoreline zone. And she's all good with what we're doing, as long as we document the town. And. We're working on improving the, the trails along the shore and up further with putting some wood chips down to cover up the roots, so the safety can walk on. And hopefully, if we get the grant, we'll be getting some new picnic tables and paderondak chairs out there this summer. And that would allow to cull up a few of the worst of picnic tables, or possibly repurpose them with the road repair. From there, want to look at some priorities for the future improvements. Came up with a short list of top priorities of improving the signage. Another thing I hope the select board considers is renting out the chapel area as a separate picnic area from the pines. There's been comments, public comments online, people looking for a lower-cost option than the pines itself to rent out. I think the chapel would be a perfect area for a small family gathering, or just smaller gatherings in general. Especially now that the roof has been repaired over there. We can move some more tables and chairs over there in the near future, once no one's come in, hopefully. So that would be another option for revenue stream for the town. Maybe, maybe half the cost of the pines rental. Another priority would be addressing the wet area from the playground to the main beach area. Hopefully getting some fill in there, and getting that cleaned up and filled in can allow for some future improvements, maybe looking into getting a large pavilion up in that area to provide shelter and shade. That was another top issue mentioned in the survey, was since we lost the large pine trees on the beach, there's no shade out there. On the hot days, be able to get a little bit of shelter and some shade out there. And getting the area filled in could also allow for concerts, things like that. It's a nice area. And then just another whole list of other ideas we've discussed for improvements. I won't get into the full details of those, but that's pretty much it. Also, we hope to continue with pursuing grants, getting more donations, and things of that sense to help with the park improvements, with not costing the taxpayers a lot of additional money. There are opportunities that we've learned of, that there are foundations out there, family foundations and corporate sponsors that are looking for things to put their names on. So potential things like that would be, the pavilion could solicit, somebody could actually make a donation and pay for the entire thing.
I think you've covered it. Yeah, so committee disbands on the eighteenth, and so we have Holly and I, Holly Hurt and I have looped in the rest of the Parks and Rec Committee to kind of keep them notified of the status of the, of our projects, and then what Parks and Rec is capable of continuing in the future. Some of the smaller projects and safety concerns, and playground being one of them, actually. If you don't mind, I, I think I just wanted to address that one issue was the, the wooden play structure down there. We had, one of the, one of the grant coordinators we were talking with over the summer had happened to mention, as a total side note, about the safety of that, of that wooden place at, and he had suggested removing it. We, I think Holly asked Lindsay about that, and are in the works of perhaps getting some, a permit to do that.
I just have to like, if you guys have someone haul, if you need someone to haul debris.
Okay.
I just need to know like a quote of what it'll cost, and I think Jeanette gave like the amount of what's available in this budget.
Okay.
I'll do it for the cost of disposal, to get reimbursed, whatever it costs me, just like I did with the shed there when, when we did that.
But yeah, if you want to coordinate with Parks and Rec.
Because it goes by, when I take it, it goes by the pound, actually.
Is it the hauling cost, or is it the cost that they'll charge?
Both, whatever it costs me to get rid of.
Are they gonna charge to dispose of the?
That's all I want to be reimbursed for.
Like PT and hardware, yeah.
It's not, it's not gonna be a ton of money.
Yeah.
It's like a hundred, I don't, I haven't checked the prices this year, but it was around a hundred and thirty-five to a hundred and fifty dollars a ton. And the, the shed itself that we did demo was two loads. So I can't imagine that that would be more than one, if we cut it up and stack it in the truck, right?
That's what I was thinking, yeah.
Should be able to go on one.
Is it the J. Simpson?
Yeah, I take it, I take it'll go up there. And then they'll make it into mulch, then we'll buy that, put it up on the trail.
Ask them to save it out, so we know.
They also have the, they have a playground mulch, so when, when it gets replaced or whatever, I saw some, some of that in here.
Yeah, that's something certainly, Parks and Rec absolutely will do a order. That was another nice discussion with Matt and you and that grant coordinator, he, he's a, he's a public playground safety certified, so he was, you know, gave us a lot of good ideas about addressing safety issues of the balls of the playgrounds, and then, yeah, certainly the mulch, the play, getting new playground mulch down there. And then I know at the last Bunganat meeting, that the demo of the wooden swing set was something Dave that had wanted us to, in addition to Lindsay, just run through the board too, to do, so I didn't want to forget that. But, yeah, I think there's certainly a lot of projects down there that Parks and Rec can take over. You know, helping with signage, things like that, and that, that was really the intent of the, the walk at Bunganat last Saturday, because we've been bringing it up at the last Parks and Rec's meetings, and a couple of the girls said, I've never been down there. So I said, let's, let's go, yeah, so getting them in the loop.
I hadn't been there and walked around in a while, and it was nice to see the improvements.
It's getting there.
It's, it's really amazing, considering what it looked like. I was, did one of the original walkarounds with everyone too, and, you know, it's nice, it's nice to see the improvement.
Yeah.
The roof on the chapel, the bridge is fantastic.
Yeah. Yeah, it's looking great, it's getting there.
I looked at the machinery repair too, but I see on the report that somebody's, that somebody's already set to do it, so.
I, I think, yeah, no, it's not, fighting with Dave over that.
It's not as big of a repair as I, as I pictured it.
Yeah, yeah, it's like a loose tooth.
As long as it gets done, I don't, doesn't matter if it does. As long as it gets done, and I saw the name in there, and I said, well, I said, I know it'll get done right, so.
I think that was perhaps the, you know, the name he had in mind from the get-go, but then I, I do, I did hear your offer at the last meeting to do that, so.
There's a couple times I offered, but I didn't.
Yeah.
I have another question, some of the items were marked like they were gonna be finished before the park opens.
Yeah.
So I didn't know, like, how, how?
Yeah.
How in the end of people.
Want to speak to that? I, I, I noticed, you know, I did note, there's a, it's a little overwhelming, because I think there are, there are several things in here where it does say, you know, will be completed before the park opens in May, but a lot of it is material that is on site.
The park opens, is it Memorial?
Oh, yeah, sorry, Memorial Day.
Okay, so we have the rest of April and then through May. My top priorities, because I'll be doing a lot of the work, get my tractor out there, is to get the path done, smoothed out, wood chips down on top of it, and then work on the handicap parking. That's probably gonna be a couple of weekends for myself, just getting material looped around and stuff.
So I know Dave's been talking about like beach restoration, so if you go in and do handicap parking, like what's that gonna do if we go in and do beach restoration after? Is it gonna mess it up?
It should not, because the, the parking will be off of the lower driveway, which would be the main path for bringing in sand and stuff.
Do we have to take the erosion mulch off first that was put there when the trees came down?
Most of that will probably be pushed to the embankment, because the D E P's gonna want the separation from the water. There's only ten to twelve feet up the embankment of erosion control mix before the sand beach here.
Do we need a permit by rule for that, this whole thing?
That, that requires. I, I checked with Rebecca, and as long as we push the parking outside the seventy-five-foot setback, which was the plan, there's no restriction on that. Just be documented.
The wood chips on the ball side have been sitting there a really long time, are they like safe to put over on the water side?
We think so?
We took a look at them on Saturday, dug down, and they seem to be intact, they're not decomposing yet.
Right, not, you know, it's not a pile of compost in the middle there. We were able to dig down, I don't know, you probably dug down three feet in one spot, and then on one side of it, it was still frozen, so. It looked like they're in great shape for trails to put down in the pines and.
But when they clean up the pines, there are some chips, they're small piles though, just from the brush that they chipped right there, might be helpful.
Yeah.
Will be as normal.
I actually, I did, I sent a quick email over to Gerard just to pick their brain to see if they had any leads on wood chips, because I think even though, even with the large pile across the street next to the ball field, I think that won't go very far at all.
Just a short trail alone, so many exposed, that can need a lot of cover.
So.
I, I think, I think I may be able to get more chips donated.
Excellent.
They also have wood, they have a huge pile of wood chips that, that people bring their Simpsons as well. But it's just straight up wood chip. at Simpsons as well, but it's just straight up wood chips from chippers.
Yep.
Tree people, you know, they do make mulch.
Yeah.
It's available in places, and also tree companies, sometimes they look for places that they can bring it to.
Yeah.
But the problem with that, you gotta, you know, it's just like, you don't want them, you don't want wood chips from, say, they did a bittersweet mission.
Yeah.
And they ran, you know, a bunch of invasive species through there.
Exactly what I was thinking too, you know, how do you know?
You don't always, and that's the thing, but.
I, I think I can get some clean chairs that might, might be best.
Great.
For, anywhere near the water, anyway.
Does the town own a chipper? Do I remember?
We do own a chipper.
So could we ship what gets cut on the cleanup day? Like couldn't somebody be there with a little chipper and speed that through?
Yeah, smaller jobs.
Say sign a waiver.
I'll sign a waiver, it'd be so fun.
Feed it, sorry.
Where does the wood chipper live? Who's named Dan the wood chipper, sorry?
I'll run the wood chipper.
And then do you guys like want them to remove the horseshoe pits or rebuild them? Maybe something should probably just go through an approval process, although some stuff I think Kevin could easily do like trails and just the materials that are there already could easily be spread around.
I think that they should be rebuilt. People like play horseshoes. I'd like to see the volleyball court.
Yeah.
Fixed up too. I do like the, where you talk about the old outhouse and other foundation holes that need to be filled.
Oh, yeah.
That's, that's a hazard. I like, I like the idea of working on the safety issues, should be the priority first, I think.
That's really what it's been all about, just, you know, since we were dealt with the storms last year, it's just.
Cause I mean, you look at it.
Picking up.
The first time I ever walked around that property, I was looking at everything and I felt like a deer in the headlights and I was almost like, I, I had to give you guys props to, because I would have been like, I don't know where to start. Like, do I do this? Do I do this? I would have been like running around like a squirrel and nothing would have got done.
I, yeah, I noted that on my map here so that I could mention it, and then I forgot. It's, it's literally, it's 52 acres on the ball field side and it's 101 acres on the water side. It is huge, you know?
Props to you guys, I mean, I appreciate it. I appreciate the heart and the hard work.
Thank you.
And then my only last question is, so as things kind of transition to Parks and Recs, or is Parks and Recs gonna stream anything on YouTube, like Bunganat Nick, so that if people are interested, they can continue to stay like tuned in?
Yeah, that we haven't discussed as a, as a committee yet. You know, I certainly know, you know, it's in the committee handbook and outlined in there and so forth, and so I think that would be something to add to an agenda for Parks and Rec to discuss. I, and I know for sure, I mean, I've already had someone reach out inquiring about the trails, because she had, she was looking for Bunganat Committee meeting, meeting minutes, and was very interested in learning about the trails, and so was reaching out for it, so I think it would be helpful to keep people in the loop.
Yeah.
So, yeah, we can add that to the agenda, for sure. If I could circle back to the horseshoe pits, though, that was the other thing too, I don't think we had officially gotten approval to take the horseshoe pits out, but I mean, they're literally laying on the ground. I mean, there's really not much to it. You could take a shovel and pull it out. Two of them are missing the actual stakes to play.
Oh.
And then as far as putting new ones back in, I just don't know, I would like input as to where to put them, because I think that's part of the, like a.
Maybe we take them out for now, make it not a safety issue.
Yeah.
Then in the grand scheme of things, as things go, that a space will come.
Yeah.
Because I think that also if, if the plan is to fill and grade to keep the, the water from shedding down to the playground area, that it might be in the way. They might get damaged if we fix them, so.
Yeah.
I guess, I think, to use your discretion on it, but at the same time, I know that what is there is dangerous, and so it has to come out.
Yeah.
And maybe we don't replace it right away.
Well, it might make sense, so like if you guys are already removing the playground and you're gonna help them, you might want to do a playground and horseshoe pit, because you're gonna have stuff that you need to dispose of.
Yeah, it works.
And so that's the only thing I needed, like hold on or some idea of how much money it'll cost, so I can just approve a purchase order or something.
Yeah.
Well, if it's about $135 a ton, I mean, I don't see it being more than a ton.
Right, yeah.
In my best guess, the estimate.
Yeah, so I think we have no money.
And we're not saying take out volleyball courts, we're just saying like. Correct. Get them kind of back to where they should be.
Yeah, just basically.
Get them better playable.
Yeah, regrading the sand, leveling it off.
Yeah.
One of the nets needs a little bit of help.
Yeah, it just needs to be taken off and rehung and, yeah, just rake the sand and maybe do some clipping around the sides, but until there's a larger plan for, you know, like a total revamp of the volleyball courts, I don't think we're there yet, because I don't know if there's a.
It didn't look like it was taken out, but it was in the same thing, it was like, take out the horseshoes, so I just wanted to make sure that we were.
Oh, yeah, no, those will stay.
Yeah, one issue is that the horseshoe pits, once we get the new handicap parking and the lower pits are gonna be right next to the park.
Right, I was thinking of that too, so after I open.
Hit anybody or vehicle. So either town manager getting that complaint. Maybe we don't need to get a complaint that a horseshoe hit somebody's handicap parked vehicle.
Yeah, you throw those over here, right?
Do we need a motion to, for the removal, for now, of the horseshoe pits? The removal of the playground equipment?
I didn't hear all of that.
I'm sorry, do we need a motion to authorize the removal of the, at least for now, horseshoe pits and the removal of whatever is dangerous over at the playground area?
Where are we gonna store this log? I saw in the report that you would be keeping it for future use.
Mansion.
Yeah.
Oh. We're thinking of the concessions at Bunganat for now.
Okay.
We're gonna go take a peek and see what the upstairs looks like above concessions for now, and if it's doable to get it up those stairs.
Good.
Stairs are new, safe. Yeah. To your point, do I do think we need a motion for anything that we're gonna approve to proceed with?
So when you say safe, because can we just define that a little more, so it's not like, oh, that's a safety hazard, take it out? So I know the playground set and the horseshoe pits, I definitely have been identified for sure.
Something with nails sticking up, rotting wood.
But maybe just start there, right? I mean, unless you guys have other stuff on your list that you've identified?
Just the main death stairs there, just planning on roping those off once the new path is ready to go. So, right, you guys.
Well, I mean, yeah, I just, I don't want people to get hurt there, and, you know, I just keep it to a minimum.
All right, so we're talking about the pathway to go around the, sorry, death stairs. We're talking about handicap parking, we're talking about spreading out the wood chips on the trails that are like the existing ones and then new ones that Dave may or may not be able to secure. We're talking about demo of the swing set, like the playground stuff, and then removal of the horseshoe pits. Did I get? I know. Sorry, I just said it all out for you.
Wanna start with the demolition of the wooden swing set and the slide at the playground?
You lead the way and I will follow.
And the horseshoe pit removal, start with a motion for that. So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Yeah.
Barbecue grills?
Is somebody talking or are you looking at the camera?
Sorry. I'm sorry. Michelle reminded, Michelle reminded me about the, there's a couple grills still hanging out in the woods, in the bushes.
Okay.
Kind of close to where the old bridge is, is laying, and so that could be.
Never saw those.
Acted on.
Those can't go with the playground, because the play, I have to separate my loads when I go over there. No.
We'll take them over to the transfer station.
It would have to go, it would have to go separately.
Okay.
That's all I'm saying, so wood, wood is fine.
If we can get there, let's get this motion.
Yeah.
Any other discussion on this specific motion?
The demolition of the wooden swing set, slide in the horseshoe pits, removed.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Okay, that part's good.
So when you do that, I just need a, or when you put in your receipt, I just need a first quarter and I can approve it.
Yeah, that's fine. I can tell you exactly how much it is when I bring that. I'll just cover it and then get reimbursed.
And then now, what does that leave, right?
Spreading of the chips.
Handicap, handicap.
Throw a removal of the grills in there too?
Sure.
So moved?
Second discussion. Um, David.
Aye.
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 I'm sorry, as for the grills, can't they be tossed into the metal bin over at the transfer station? They take the concrete off the posts.
Yeah, that would be great, because then we would actually make money off that metal.
I'll give that a go, if that's okay.
They're pretty heavy.
Yeah.
Kevin's very good at tractor, remember?
We might be able to lash onto them and just get them up the end of the road.
They use the bucket and of the tractor and a chain, pop derido.
Yeah.
Awesome. Anything else regarding this committee report?
Thank you.
Yeah, I'll say thank you. I do like the report, I love the maps, Kevin.
I liked the picture too.
Yeah.
I really appreciate you like this, seeing this, it was really cool.
I know, that was.
I was like, wow, it used to look like.
Is that a drone shot? Stuck on the front?
Oh, I was like, how do we have that and we let it get into this?
Okay.
And seeing it in color is.
Well, I didn't know, I wanted to ask, because, you know.
A lot of green.
Sweet. Nice.
Awesome. Thank you, guys.
Yeah, thank you.
Appreciate it.
Thank you. Okay. Well, let's continue. Town manager report is in here, if there's anything specific you wanted to highlight, it's in the packet as well.
I'll do the few things, we try to just focus on stuff that's not already on the agenda, so I'm not repeating stuff over and over again. But yeah, town hall expansions moving along, we'll hopefully be able to get like a 3D model and some actual plans finalized, so I'm hoping we can get that before you guys do like your public hearings for town meeting and stuff, so people can see an idea of like what that might look like. And then the my rec programming, so I'd like to, you'll see on the further down the agenda, maybe get some policies finalized, and then I hope to make that go live pretty soon. Maybe not tomorrow, depending on busy I am, but definitely this week. And just another cool thing's coming up, we have candidates night, Michelle Bell says she'll be our moderator, so I'll put out a survey for folks that are interested. I know we have a few people that are, you know, pulled their papers, and I don't have anyone that's turned in papers just yet, but there's still time, so. Just a few things we're working on. We did get, so off the two lots we've done so far in the timber harvesting, we did get about 7,500 for the timber harvesting, and so we still have probably about eight or nine or so lots to go that we kind of grouped together for that first initial goal that we're working on, and I know the timber harvesters gonna hopefully start gearing up in the early summer, once they're ready to do that, so.
Great. Thank you.
I'm sure.
Yes.
Just a couple of quick questions. With the town hall expansion, Lindsay, is the notion of completely raising this, new building altogether or building off of the existing?
Building off the existing.
Okay. And as for going up, can the building itself, I know you don't have the answer to this, but there are a couple of things to consider, you know, can the existing structure hold that? And can the land itself, I remember there was a concern over at Massapese High School when they were talking about building up and they really couldn't because of the existing structure. I don't know if that would be a factor in this situation.
Yeah, I don't know if that would be a factor, but one of the things, so we do know.
Engineer.
Yeah, we do know this existing structure won't support a second, however, you can do it if you build some pillars outward.
All right.
To stabilize your second floor, but if we were, we were looking at, when we do the addition, which is gonna be off of this area, that addition would be built and designed in a way that you could go upwards if it ever came up down the road, not saying that you would.
Right.
But, you know, you wanna leave yourself some wiggle room for the future. So it'd almost be like, kind of like trust and, and all design so that if that ever came up, you're ready to go, and there would be space for like an elevator and stairs and stuff like that. Basically take a storage space and convert it to the elevator station. It's just trying to be forward thinking of, you know, what's gonna happen 20, 30 years from now.
Think about what this building replaced, you, you didn't ever get to see it.
Roads.
Our, our town hall was, you know, this was the Taj Mahal after that, and, how many years has it been here? Twenty, 25, 30?
The library is 30.
The library is?
Well, that wouldn't, no, it's 25 over here, but they were over there for a while.
Yeah, so it's, it's been a while.
Right around the same time.
And I'll give you one, just a quick one, with respect to candidate's night, I sent an invitation over to, a heads up, over to the government teacher over at Massapese High School, saying that this is going to be an event, and encouraging to the young people who are of voting age here in Lyman to stop on by and tune in.
Good, it's a good idea.
All right, oh, go ahead.
No, I was just gonna say, it sounded like a good idea, but I don't think anybody at home heard it, Joe.
Oh, really?
He's talking right into his mic.
I am.
I know, just saying.
I repeat. I contacted the government teacher over at Massapese High School, encouraging him to encourage his students, particularly Lyman residents, to tune into the candidate's night or show up in person. Did it come through that time, Dave?
Perfect.
All right.
Nice.
All right, we will jump into new business. Item A is to discuss recommendation to disable the Kenny Von Eight Arms due to ongoing vandalism.
Yeah, so we have another incident, let's say March 27th, the fire call, somebody smashed it and tore it down. So, yeah, I just, I think maybe it's, until things get kind of sorted out, I've dealt with probably about three bouts of vandalism, I've had an accidental or somebody, you know, ran into it, and I have probably like 15 or more incidents of where it malfunctioned and I've had to contact the main company, so just to kind of, that would be one less thing on my plate that I have to worry about, maybe we just sort of dismantle, remove the arms for now, store them in a storage area we have some room for, until we're ready to put that there and manage it. It's just not, it's time to move right now, people are destroying it unfortunately, which I do think really stinks.
Then the part, it will, it will never be closed.
Right, like before.
And there will be people there, there won't be anybody to come and. And there will be people there. There won't be anybody to come and open and close a gate, which was the point of putting the.
You still have your cameras. You still have your cameras and your lights, which, I think might help.
Mm-hmm.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Sorry, Lindsay, were, did the cameras, uh, were the cameras able to, uh, get a picture, identify, uh, any of the, uh, vandals?
Uh, only the two of them, but the last one, so someone had vandalized the cameras. And then just, because we rely on outside contracting, you know, it's a matter of when they need it fixing it. So they need to fix it before the next bout of vandalism. So I don't have any footage of that, but they are fixed now.
Okay. Thank you.
I have to put in this laptop and I don't know what happened to the cord. Vandal.
Clearly, yeah. Technology.
You got it?
Okay. I want to make sure I don't lose it.
Yeah.
Yeah. That's a tough one.
So it's up to you guys, um, you know, but I think, like, I'm not gonna be able to really respond to every time that malfunctions or doesn't work.
What does it take to take those off?
Losing a couple nuts, I guess. I don't think it wouldn't take much. I mean, what I'm worried about is, you know, we're only on the warranty for a year. So I've managed to, you know, fix some things with that, but that's gonna come up pretty soon. So if somebody comes along and they really do some damage, we're on hook for it.
Okay.
And we're coming into a busier time, but it's just, hate to leave it wide open.
Well, if we take the gates off and it becomes a problem, we close it.
Yeah.
Then the problem is solved. I mean, I hate saying it like that, it's, but.
Yeah. Okay.
I don't know. What do you think?
I think I don't want our town manager to have to continuously deal with it.
Mm-hmm.
And I don't want to cause more damage to something that was already town funds expended on.
Do we call it an experiment that failed and take the whole thing out, or do we just take the arms off?
I wouldn't do that.
I would take the arms off until we can figure out a direction.
We, we have to remember why that project started, you know, I, I hear a lot of that chatter online, where, you know, it's a waste of money, waste of money. Everybody forgets that we were finding syringes in the sand, syringes in the parking lot. And it was a safety project that that committee did an exceptional job bringing to the board at the time.
Mm-hmm.
So to say it's a failed experiment isn't, I don't, I don't think that's true.
I mean, the gates aren't.
No, you don't disrespect.
I didn't say, I didn't say it was, I said, do we call it that?
I, that's just the point of, of conversation. That's, I wasn't saying it is a failed experiment.
Yeah.
At all.
I want to point out too, like the gates, the gates themselves aren't really contributing to any aspect of safety. I mean, the cameras definitely are a benefit and I think the lights as well, um, which helps deter activity over there. Um, so those are great ideas to bring to that table in terms of safety. I just don't see that the gates themselves contribute to what you want to consider safety.
Just delineates when it's closed.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, but I mean, if you want to get in there, just run through it with your truck.
Mm-hmm.
Another big reason why that position should be filled.
Agreed.
Don't mean to suggest something facetious, but, uh, maybe asking, uh, the county sheriff, Bill King, that, uh, could this be some, something on his department's radar?
Yeah.
I, I think if there's anything that is a deterrent, it is the notion that there is a law enforcement presence, at least a possibility of it.
Oh, sure. And every, so I call in and do a report to the York County Police Department every time there is something going on down there. Um, and so what ends up happening, what I encourage other people to do is the more reporting you do, the more they do become aware and they start to position themselves. But as that reporting quiets down, they are gonna go to all their hotspot areas. And one of the complaints I get sometimes, just in general around the town, is something happens and they call my office and they want me to get the police involved, but they, and then I say, well, you have to report it to the police because you're the person, you know, witnessing or bringing the complaint or charges. Um, some people don't want to do that for whatever reason. I get voicemails on my phone sometimes. And what I've found is if I call the sheriff's department and explain to them, you know, I've had a couple complaints, you know, people calling about this or that, um, you know, when someone's reporting in, like, they want your birth date. They want to know who's reporting, who's making the complaint. So they tend to get a little frustrated when I tell them, well, just somebody left a voicemail on my phone, didn't even get any of that detail. So, you know, I strongly encourage that, just the community in general, like, if you notice things going on, report it. Because the more you do that, the more presence they will bring to that area. But I find sometimes the answer I get is, I don't want to do that because I don't want to get involved in that drama, is what I usually talk. Doesn't the caller go on up to his spot, water that gets?
I don't think the caller does. I think the incident does.
It's not a.
Yeah, not the caller.
So, thoughts on the gate arms?
Mm-hmm.
I think that, like, we should take the recommendation of the town manager and take them off for now. Um, especially if we are coming out of the contract, like to guarantee the warranty. If they're trying to get in and their intention is to only break the gate arm, but they end up damaging the actual light thing in the middle there, whatever that is, um, then we're on hook for more.
Agreed.
So I think it kind of would save us money in the long run and hope that whatever happens, we catch it on the camera and hope that we end up with a, somebody that fills a position where they can take care of it. So.
So is that a motion, Amber?
Yeah, that's a motion. Okay.
Second.
Here we go, fighting for seconds again.
Dave's got it.
Any additional discussion on this? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Alright.
Sorry, sorry, Joe, I didn't mean to step on you.
No, no problems.
Uh, okay, then, uh, discussion, workshop to review the budget process.
Um, yeah, so we've had a lot of back and forth. And I think sometimes, you know, for Jeanette and I, we try to go over the budget process with everyone. Um, I think it would be a good idea, you know, I don't really care who shows up, who doesn't, but just to do a workshop and invite the budget committee to talk about the process, like where it all begins. Because for me and Jeanette, or me and the treasurer, you could say, we start very early on, like July, August. You know, and then we kind of get into like March, April, and people are, you know, still trying to like, well, I want this and I want this and I want that. So, you know, we have our own timelines that I've shared with you guys of how we have to get things on the warrant and get to public hearings and get to, you know, elections and stuff like that. So, you know, if it helps, I, you know, would want to be like a good teaching opportunity and, you know, address like questions and, and just kind of go over the process. Um, yeah, so I would want to do a workshop because we love workshops.
I do love a good workshop. We all know this. Does it make sense after the election, uh, only because there'll be a new seated board member and ideally new seated budget members at that point? Just something to consider.
Um, you know, we could, I guess.
Only because, I just don't know if you want to do it twice, that's all I'm saying, right? Like, I, I know your deadlines. I know, I, I've got them stuck for, they'll be there forever.
Are we looking to make changes to it, the process?
Maybe. I mean, I have suggestions. I think for me, like, what's come up is that, you know, certain budget committee members, like, have reached out to committees or individuals, like, after this whole process has rolled out and specifically, like, asked them, you know, hey, what do you need in your budget and stuff like that? So it's just to help people understand, like, the whole process, how we get here, what's entailed. You know, if you want things to be added to it, like, how did you go about doing that? Um, was sort of what I wanted to cover, just with like current members. And as far as like changing process, um, my suggestion, and I'm okay with like, if nobody likes this, but I just feel like I'd love to just do it all one and done. Like, if we could sit down for like four days, right, nine to four, Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, and just.
You guys didn't like my Friday workshop and I was like, let's go four days in a row.
But then it would be done. Um, only because, I can't tell you how often, you know, Jeanette and I were, were putting together all this different, your packets of information and this thing that we're putting together, you know, and people are like, well, what if this and what if, you know? There's an opportunity. It starts with.
You can say my name. I do it all the time.
It's not you.
I do too.
I did it in a few things.
But, you know, we start with departments. We start with, um, this year we put in committees. Um, we, we kind of built like a questionnaire and tried to break the ice with a lot of people, um, to say, what do you want, what do you need? And then we build it out from there. And if you guys start looking at things, you go, I, you start questioning things, you know, we help go back and forth. Um, it's just you, it's almost every year when we get town, down to like doing the warrant, we get these eleventh hour, like something comes out of the woods. I don't know. I don't know how to avoid it other than to like continue to teach and.
Yeah.
You know, go over the process and, and the process can be tweaked, you know, if we want to, if there's better ways of doing it. I do like involving, you know, the departments and, and the committees and kind of starting with those initial icebreaker questionnaires, just to get a, understand, even if maybe their requests might seem ridiculous, but just to get a perspective of, you know, where are you guys at? Um, I did steelness from Kennybug, but when I did the committee handbook, I, I want to kind of reinforce the, like, the budget worksheet that kind of, and there's a questionnaire in there that you ask questions like, you know, whose does this serve? And how does it benefit the community? So if you're developing an initiative. Yeah. Put that in the committee handbook. So I'd like to see committees and stuff like that use that. So if they are proposing to you, I want sixty thousand to cut trees or something like that. They can give you a little more detail and sustenance to it because it helps.
Yeah.
Understanding where you're coming from and what you're going through.
Well, and it saves the extra back and forth too, right?
Yeah.
Somebody comes and says, oh, I want sixty here to cut down trees. And we're just like, well, what trees? Where? Ooh, wow.
Yeah.
And then it has to wait until next meeting because everything has to be done in a public setting, so it, yeah. I'm fine with however, I.
I'm fine with like waiting until, you know, like you were saying, we can double it up. I'm fine with doing that. Um.
I think it, it ties into the onboarding that you're.
Yeah.
Well, the first, I was thinking that the, I don't really want to add to that because, in a sense, the, the select board stuff that we're gonna talk about is for the select board. Doesn't have anything to do with the budget committee. We'd have them sitting here.
Right.
Um, and so, but the first available Thursday that I would have for that would be the eighth of May. Because I have fire commission on the first.
But then are we gonna do it again in July or August?
Well, we were doing onboarding for the select board because we talked about, we did this at the beginning of this fiscal year. Um, and that's what your workshop, about the onboarding, select board is about, is like.
Yeah, a procedure, to come up with a procedure to, to make the, that first meeting not be, uh, the first one to blurt out.
Right.
I nominate so-and-so and, and nobody else gets a chance to say anything. I would love to know who, who, why, and when, who wants what, what position. It would just be nice to be able to discuss it like adults instead of running each other over. That, that's happened the last two years on the board. And I feel like we've tried to bring ourselves to a place of being more respectful and transparent with each other. And, and that is like, not, that doesn't really tie into what we've been trying to accomplish, I feel like.
If we're not really gonna change the process that much, I think it would make sense to wait until we have new members, you know?
Good. Well, what's.
I'm fine either way. I just wanted to point out there's new, on both sides of it, like budget and, so.
You guys weren't very keen on my idea of just blasting through it in four days.
I mean, no, because I.
I thought that I want to take more vacations.
I know, exactly. That's why I don't like, no, I don't want to take so many.
There's five months. When's the election?
Right in the beginning of September.
September is the election.
The tenth and the twelfth, yeah.
So we'd have the, the following Thursdays there would be the nineteenth and the twenty-sixth of, of June.
Um, well, nineteenth is Juneteenth day, so we're closed. So it might make sense to maybe do it in like, either the twenty-sixth or in July. And I'm fine with July too, because then it gives whoever elected, like, so you guys can do your onboarding. That would be not budget committee. And then there would be a workshop where we just sit down with the budget committee and say, hey, here's the process. Is that what you were thinking?
That's what I would think.
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Could probably do them in the same night, right? If you do the select board onboarding and then invite the budget committee for forty-five minutes, an hour.
I think select board onboarding, now, correct me if I'm wrong.
We're talking about this when we had two meetings today.
But it's also a select board meeting. Sorry.
So.
Select board on, onboarding was a lot of, too, one of the things that we did in those workshops was just sort of like set priorities for the upcoming year and like what we've got currently kind of going on, getting people up to speed. Like, one of those favorite things, right? The franchise agreement, which will still be on the damage. But, but like things like that, right? And where we go from here and how do we want to, you know, interact as a board and, and that kind of stuff. So I don't know that I would double up a budget committee then, but.
Yeah, I was thinking like, if you, if you want to stick with Thursdays, and I don't know where fire commission meetings happen, but like.
They're the first Thursday of the month.
Okay, so I have like July tenth, seventeen, twenty-four. I think sometime in July would be a good time because then Jeanette and I start our budget process pretty much by the end, like mid-July to the end of July.
Okay.
I don't know if there will be a fire commission meeting on the third of July. It's a little far, far out. I'm gonna put it on there anyway.
And we could do like in between Mondays, you know, we could do like fourteenth, twenty-eighth.
Well, you want to schedule it now or do you want to think about it and schedule it next time or what do you want to do?
Set it on the calendar now, fourteenth, twenty-eighth.
Fourteenth works for me.
Prefer.
Fourth or twenty-eighth.
Summer for you, Dave?
Which month?
Sure.
Which month?
I love your schedule, Dave. Everything works for it. It's great.
Twenty-fourth then?
You're saying twenty-fourth? July fourteenth?
Yeah, I thought, yeah.
I was thinking everyone else said the fourteenth.
Oh, that's a Monday, yeah, okay. No, I was looking at Thursday.
Sorry.
I don't care.
Good.
We'll pencil it in and then if we decide to change it, we can change it.
Perfect.
So I'm not going to Sturgis till next year, so, so you know.
Work your calendars.
Vacation.
Okay.
Yes.
Alright, sorry. Uh, item C, review and approve field use policy and it's so that Lindsay can get it loaded into the MyRec program and. Correct me if I'm wrong, start using it.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
Um, there was two questions I had, I thought of in the last minute. So what do you guys want to do about the concession stands? Because I think there's like keys floating around out there. I don't know if it's something you want to add to the policy, rent it, like, what are your thoughts? Do you want to hold off on that for now and just kind of leave them and figure it out later?
I think, to your point, I think there's a lot of keys floating around. It's similar to the way like gates and things used to be.
Mm-hmm.
I would change it personally. That would be my preference. Um, and, and I think there needs to be some protocol around that. I don't know what that is right off the top of my head, but I don't think it's an automatic, like, with the field.
Do they, do they get utilized now?
I think the soccer club uses it. I think they're probably one of the few. I know, like, I think they store, I don't know if Parks and Rec stores stuff in it. I know, I think the soccer club might have some. Yeah. So, but.
We always, so I can maybe adjust the locks for now and then we can just leave it out if you guys want to figure it out later, like cross that bridge when we get there, you know? I don't expect like a protocol to come up like right now in the instance. I just, it's a thought that occurred to me. So I wanted to put it in there maybe. And I'm fine with kind of putting out, this is for me is like a baseline policy that I wanted to get out there. I think it covers pretty much most everything around the rub, like. Get us started. And of course there's going to be some trials and errors.
Is there a way to put the concession stand on MyRac?
You can.
Like for informational purposes, like for the, you know, for the first year, like how many people would want to rent it, you know?
Yeah. So like, I, um, yeah, I could add like a question to whoever is requesting to use the field. So you want to know, like, would you want to?
Yeah. Would you be interested in, you know, like if the soccer club is, like if we already know that the soccer club uses it when they fill out their, you know, like their schedule, they could fill out for the concession. So then we would know how many hours, would it be worth it to rent?
Okay.
You know?
So you want it to be.
So like if, if there was somebody there, you know, just renting the field, but like Parks and Rec was like, ooh, we could go over and have the concession stand open.
Yeah. It's just getting the access, right? So like, so if they, so you want them to use it so we can collect some data? But if I change the locks, like who's gonna?
I don't want to use it to collect data. I just, here's where my brain is. And this is gut check after two meetings. So just prefacing it with that. I think a concession stand offers the potential for an organization to bring revenue in. And I think that that should be evaluated. So I get that we're not going to charge for the field. Understand. But I do think that that's either a fee or like a town, a town committee or a town like to raise money that comes back to Parks and Rec or a historical society, or like maybe those groups get given sort of first dibs of, hey, we have a rental. If you want to go run concessions. It's not huge money, but I think it's, I think it's valid.
So like, cause I can export a, a calendar and say, you know, give it to the Parks and Recs committee or something and say, you know, here's all the.
For cemetery committee even, like I just, I, that's what I think of. Who should have first dibs on a town asset like that? Or the group renting it could pay, I, I don't know what a fee structure looks like for that. But I would just, I, I don't think it's huge, but I think it's, if you want to use it, then you're, you're essentially gaining revenue off of being at a town property.
Right. Yeah. I like that.
Not charging for field use. I get that. I'm on board. Yeah.
Say something.
Yeah. The stuff in, can you say it in the microphone though, just so that we have it? Sorry.
I can.
Yep. Thanks.
Holly Hart, Parks and Rec. Um, the stuff in the sock, sock, the concession stand over at Bunginut, that is all the soccer clubs. It's not the towns or Parks and Rec. Just so if you're, if you're rent, you need to know that. It's not.
Or.
It's theirs.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Just figure that out.
Something to think about. Well, I mean, and that's another, another thing that, that makes me think of like, so now we have another organization needing their stuff in our.
Not just their stuff. I think like they have like, to your point, they have a, like a fridge or, or like, like actual stuff for concessions.
Yes.
Is, is, right? It's one of those sort of just like homegirl kind of things. It's organically happened over the years. By no, like it's nobody's fault. It's just that was how it went. And just getting a handle on with that.
So who would be liable if somebody broke in there and destroyed all of that?
Right. But that, that's why I'm getting her.
You know?
Yeah.
Yes. If not on our insurance, I don't know. It would be them.
I don't think that's what they'd say, but.
So.
Okay. It's okay. Yeah. Okay.
You want me to just change the locks and leave it for now?
I, well, I think it's worth a communication to the soccer club, but just, I don't know. Maybe I, I think and I hate to put again, something on you, but I think just assessing what is in there, evaluating like what, what's in here and then communicating with the group that's been using it and say like, what?
This is what?
Yeah. Like. Well, just, hey, we were made aware that this is all, all of yours. Like what's the plan, right? Like I don't know. I just. It's a town, it's a, it's a town building. And if they again, it's just morphed into this. So I think we need to wrap our hand, our arms around what, what it is, right? And what it's going to be. And if they want to be part of that or not, or I, I don't know.
It just goes with what we've been doing and talking about is assessing fields and, and structures and, and all those things. I think that's just one more that needs to be looked at as well.
Right.
It's not like we're headhunting or anything. We just want to know. We don't even know what's in there.
Yeah.
And we don't know who has keys and who hasn't, you know? It's time to rail it back in. No. So let's get some information or just think about how, what we want to do, how we want to handle it.
Right.
Otherwise, I think this. Excuse it to me.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
I'm sorry. Um, just one question and one suggestion for the, uh, proposed pine grove use policy. Um, this mention of a charcoal grill.
Can we do the, can we have field use for?
We're on C.
Oh, my.
Sorry. That's all.
I'll make a motion to accept the field use policy.
I'll second.
Any discussion on that? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right. Now we're going to jump into the pine grove rental policy.
So you were asking about the grill. So there is a charcoal grill down there that can't, we weren't able to move it, right? It's like solid.
And it's in, it's in good shape.
It is now. Okay.
There's just one. It's the only one left.
Okay. Just missed that myself when I was down there. And, um, this mention of a covered pavilion, talking about the chapel there. I think someone might got the, may get the misimpression that a pavilion is maybe larger than what the chapel is. So maybe, uh, the dimensions of the chapel mentioned there so that, uh, people realize that this is not as expansive as the word may lead one to believe.
Right.
Is that, which section is that?
That's, uh, right in the front, uh, purpose summary.
Okay. Well, add dimensions.
Are you, I know, I know, I know, we're only just getting started, but you can have like pictures too, right?
Yes.
For each like facility.
Yep. We can add pictures in that stuff. Um, I don't have any good ones since like we've done some of the repairs. So I'd want to go out there probably in the spring and maybe reading up.
Yeah. I'm certainly not thinking like tomorrow, there should be pictures there. By any means, I'm just saying in general, I think as this develops, it would be helpful to have those there. Any other thoughts on that?
I don't think it's, uh, I think it's good.
I know the Y had previously coordinated this part of it. Do you have the points of contact for like the other Parks and Rec departments that were using it?
Yeah. So I already have a list of people that have reached out.
Oh, perfect.
And then, um, so yeah.
Okay. I just want to make sure that they all like know, hey, this is how you do it now.
Motion to approve the Bunginut pine grove rental use policy?
Second.
Any additional discussion? All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Awesome. Okay. Item E, review and approve the CEO fee schedule changes. We have a nice highlighted copy in our packet.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
I'm sorry, Lindsay. Uh, is what is highlighted, um, new fees or increased fees or changed fees in some way?
A little bit of both.
Okay.
It looks like a little bit.
I know she's talked a lot about it with me, so I'm going to try to recall off some of that. I think the permanent dock permit one is relatively new because, um, now that we have this whole temporary versus permanent. One goes to the CEO, one goes to the planning board, one has more of the review process in it. The hookup fixture fee for the plumbing, she had talked to me about, sometimes she only has to go there and look at did you hook it up right? So I think she had added like a hookup only minimum fee.
I see.
And then the home occupation, including medical marijuana, because she's seen some of those come in. And they are allowed under home occupation under your ordinance. The subdivision, the prior fee schedule was a little confusing and neither one of us could understand it. So she simplified it and just did like a flat fee and then, you know, plus your X amount per lot. And then divided that between your preliminary review and your final review to help cover all the administrative work that gets done to review those. Um, so that's what I know about it. And I can always go back with any other questions you guys have.
Would these go into effect upon adoption or, uh, at the beginning of the next fiscal year?
Upon your adoption.
Make a motion to approve the CEO fee schedule changes.
Second.
Discussion.
A lot of money.
I'm wondering, well, that was, what I was just sitting there thinking was I wish I had the old fees to compare what the increases are.
Well, not, not that, not that I would ever do one, but you know, somebody comes in with a 20 lot subdivision. You know, you're looking at $10,000 in permit fees. More than that, but $10,000 just in a permit fee. And then you have, you know, your engineering and architecture. A lot of money. But that's just one person's.
Here's what the old fees were. Subdivision application fee was $1,000. Plus 250 per lot and additional applicable fees see below. So you paid $1,000 and 250 per lot. Then you paid 250 for your preliminary subdivision plan. 250 for your final plan. And then if you ever wanted to do a revision request, it's $250.
Stand by, it's too much, but please continue.
It was confusing because she kept asking me like, how much am I charging for these subdivisions? Cause it says, you know, it's a thousand dollars and then X amount per lot. And then do you pay 250 on top of it for your preliminary, you know? And then 250 for your sub, your final. Um, so she just kind of cleaned it up how she thought it would make more sense. As far as, you know, what's too much? I don't know. You know, you can compare to other towns. I know my town does a flat rate fee and then it's an additional amount per lot. You know, um, sometimes it's, might be considered a little bit of a deterrent for, you know, growth. If you own a lot, 100 lot subdivisions coming into town. I don't know if that's the idea behind it. I'm not saying that's your CEO's idea behind it, but I don't know what would be, you know, an acceptable amount. There is quite a bit of administration that goes into reviewing subdivisions. So the last one we did was work view. And we did hire a consultant that the person did pay for because they had escrow. And it was a lot of my time and the CEO's time to meet with that applicant, almost on a weekly basis, to meet with the consultant, to go out to do the site visits. Um, you know, the planning board reviewed that plan for, I think a couple of months. And then there was a lot of, I would say probably more of the administration fell on the after it was approved. So there's just, there's a lot of work that goes into it to make sure that they're doing the plan exactly as they proposed it to the town. And there were many instances where, you know, and I'm really glad I hired the consultant to help us because he pointed out a lot of things. It was like, oh, well, that's not in the plan. So there's a lot of administrative work on the town's part that goes into overseeing a subdivision. Once it gets approved and it goes into town. I think you really do want to make sure if they say they're going to put in a 20 lot subdivision and it's going to look like this, you want it to look like that. That's what is proposed.
So nothing that's highlighted is changing?
Well, you got from.
No, I mean, I mean, nothing that's not highlighted is what I meant to say. Sorry.
Yeah. And then so the other ones. Our dock permit, she changed it to temporary. So the price is the same. And then she added the permanent dock permit because that is a planning board review process that is relative, it's never really been utilized. I don't know, but it's new to us. She even created a permit and stuff for it. And then yeah, I mentioned, so some of it, the plumbing, she just changed the verbiage. So instead of saying like fixture fee or hookup fee, she clarified the verbiage of what that is. So the price didn't change there. The marijuana, so the home occupation, including medical marijuana. So that's for all home occupations. Before it was home occupation permit and then marijuana annual inspection fee. But the marijuana didn't have home occupation permit, but you have to get one. So she just said home occupation, including medical marijuana. And then, um, she put 250. And then the subdivision, let's see, site review application. It looks like that's the same. She just changed the verbiage. And then the subdivision application fee, as I mentioned before, she did change the pricing on that.
And so it sounds like on that one, instead of the flat fee of a thousand, we just went to 350.
Yeah. It was a thousand dollars with 250 per lot.
And now it's 350 for the preliminary.
So she came down over there.
Right. Because you, you're losing that thousand dollars overall and just adding $100 to preliminary and final.
Right.
Okay.
Is there a fee for the third party inspections?
That's always going to be covered by the applicant and that's in your subdivision standards.
Right. But is that put into escrow for the town?
Yeah. No, no, they pay for that. So when they do an escrow, the way we did it last time is, um, they had to put it in escrow, went into the separate bank account named for the town. And then they gave us a separate, we got a quote for what a consultant would cost. And then whenever that quote came in at, they just gave us the money and we paid the person with that money. So they're, because they're paying for the consultant. We're not going to do that.
Right. No, I, I understand that. Normally it's a fee upfront.
There isn't. Um, and that's just by design of subdivision standards, if I recall.
Okay. So we have motion, we have second. We've discussed, is there? So we have a motion, we have a second, we've discussed, is there any additional discussion on that?
Well, just based on, uh, Dave's.
I'm sorry.
Yeah, I'm sorry. Okay, just based on Dave's concern, um, would it be who was to, uh, table us and, uh, look at the price, particular prices particularly for the subdivision application fees, uh, a little bit more carefully or?
I'm satisfied with the explanation.
Good.
I am knowing it's actually a little bit less.
Do you want to wait till Amber comes back?
Yeah.
We're on pause. I feel like we should play some elevator music or something.
We can't get, we can't get totally sad, Jack, it'll get us.
Don't want to retake it this again anyway.
Yeah. I mean, I know they're better than one of those. They're not my support.
Yep.
I'm like, I can't, I can't, this is quiet. She's so quiet. Okay. So we have a motion, we have a second, we've done some discussing. So, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I'll abstain.
Okay. Okay. We'll continue to along. Got a committee applicant. For Parks and Rec. If everyone has it. Dave, do you have it?
I do.
Okay.
Sound good with it?
Yep. Make a motion that we put the new applicant on the Parks and Rec Committee as recommended by the town manager.
Second.
Any discussion on that? All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Aye.
And Donna Johnson is now appointed officially to the Parks and Rec Committee. All right, item G.
That's awesome.
Of public comment procedures, requesting agenda placement and managing Q and A.
Um, so I put this one on here just because I've seen this a couple of times. Where sometimes people show up to public comment and they ask you guys questions and I know we don't always have the answers from the back. And it seems like, I've seen some people leave kind of frustrated or confused. And maybe I start thinking to help alleviate that confusion and Joe might be a good person to help with this, I don't know if he wants to. But like, on our agenda where we put under public comment, there's just a little blurb that you kind of read on. Maybe we can reform that in a way that sort of addresses like, you know, the public comment piece, it's not really always going to be a back, we can't guarantee it's going to be a back.
It's not a discussion, right?
Maybe we say it's not going to be.
Yeah, but that I want to remind people, like if they want to get on the agenda, you know, even if they have just questions they want to ask you, you know, there is a process to go through to get on the agenda. The only thing I really ask of people is like, give me something that I can put in the packet. So if you have questions, and some people have reached out to me just years past, you know, oh, I want to talk to the board, but they won't tell me what. So in fairness for you guys to be able to prepare and answer their questions, you know, with, with accuracy, you know, come Monday, they should be able to submit something, you guys review it in your packet. So I was just, that was my thing, I was thinking of maybe changing that little blurb on your agenda, however you want to word it, whatever you guys think makes sense. Just to help people so they don't leave frustrated, like, why didn't you guys answer my questions, you know?
We had a whole workshop where we talked about this and I can't remember what, if it was this board or if it was.
I don't think it was this board.
A year or two ago where we just talked about, no, Tom Hatch was definitely on whichever board it was. And it, it was more, I think at that point in time, what we were trying to combat was a lot of, um, sort of like very negative stuff, so how do we, how do we combat that? And I think we've done that pretty well as a board, so I think it's kind of on to the next, right? Like, okay, we've improved that, so now do we, how do we help people understand process?
For instance, though, uh, last meeting, it would have been helpful to have been able to think about what the person that came to the podium had to talk about, because later on.
Right.
You know, we came to the Zoom thing, which I'm glad, because I said during the meeting, man, I wish he wouldn't have left.
Right.
Because that just made more questions that, that we, and things that we talked about. And, uh, so I think if you do have something like that or you want to ask a question, that you should go through the process of getting put on the agenda. So at least, like she says, to have, we can have information and start thinking about that kind of stuff.
Right.
I think that would be helpful.
I wonder too, and I know it's work, but I wonder if there's like a, like one pager or something that we can, just even just to have it on the website that says, you know, like, I don't even know what it would say at this point yet, but.
It says on the website under slide four, like you get to the agendas, but I guess it's not like a whole one page thing.
Right.
It's just sort of a little, people probably gloss over it.
Right.
I just felt like it would be.
Almost like a select board meeting FAQ or something is what I'm thinking about, just to like, like, how do I get on the agenda? Oh, this is how, and this is when, this is the deadline, um, what is public comment, like?
I mean, we put it in like your standard of conduct, if anyone wants, I mean, there is the agenda, you know, there's a process there. It's just, I don't think people are going to like actively go to the website.
Right.
Just if, because they might enter the room thinking, I'm going to ask you guys, I want to get into a discussion. So you, you hit it off right there.
Yeah.
When you're saying that in the public.
Right.
You guys always do when you get to the public info session. So I was just thinking it would help alleviate people, you know, walking away frustrated or walking away confused.
Yeah, agree, agree, yeah.
Yeah, I do recall us discussing this one, I think we were discussing the standard of conduct. That if our times where we can respond and answer a question right off the, uh, bat and other times that, you know, we don't have the answer and uh, that might be frustrating for, uh, responded. Here's some.
Right. So I don't know. It's your guys' agenda, so if one of you and whoever, or myself, I don't care, do, does anyone want to like, it doesn't have to be in this meeting, if you take it to the next one. You come up with some, something that you want on there. Your agenda, so what do you want?
Good.
Yeah. Let's, um, if we can keep this on the agenda for our next meeting, I don't mind doing up a quick little blurb. Taking a go at it and then we at least have something to say, oh, that makes sense, or maybe we could add this or take out that kind of thing.
There may, maybe some language in the standard of conduct that would be a guideline.
Right?
Yeah.
Any question in the audience?
Yeah.
Can you?
The wording for it's in the charter.
Okay.
Under 3.9.
Perfect. Thank you. Awesome, all right. Okay.
Did it address the Q and A?
Yes.
Okay.
Item. Item number six, we are going to review and approve the minutes from the March 17th meeting.
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Fighting for seconds again, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Uh, okay, we're going to move on to item number seven, payroll warrant number 44, the name of $31,208.61.
So moved.
Anyone want to second it instead?
Second.
Thanks, Dave. Uh, any discussion on that? All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Aye.
Is Vicki that moved it?
Yes.
Okay.
And then we're going to go on to accounts payable warrants, number.
Forty-five.
Forty-five. In the amount of $721,581.56.
I'm sorry, is that, uh, warrant 45 or 44?
Uh, 45, 44 was payroll.
Yeah.
Okay, my.
Warrant 45.
Okay. Glasses on here.
Okay. Any discussion, or, sorry.
So moved.
For a second.
I'll second it, I was waiting for somebody else to do it because it's been such a.
Nobody wants to talk over each other. Discussion on that one.
The big check was to, uh, RSU 57 for just a hair under $500,000.
Always is. Um, all in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Aye.
What am I, I'm sorry.
Signing stuff now?
Well, I'm, I'm just signing because it's right in front of me, so.
I'll make a motion to go into executive session for one MRSA 405A discussion regarding personnel matters.
I'll second.
Any discussion?
Might I ask, is this, uh, anything to do with the conduct of any member of the select board?
Personnel, I mean, I think that's something that.
I'll take that as a, yes, I guess.
I have no idea what it is, so don't take it on, I'm just, it's personnel, what we would.
Well, maybe. Past experience. Might this do, deal with, uh, my conduct?
Are we? I know, should we go into executive session first?
Sure.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Opposed.
Aye.
Okay.